I'm on.
Maybe.
You've got like ten fifteen minutes.
Jesus. Yeah. We are back on the record. I need a motion to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those, oh, I need a roll call.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrosse?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is a proclamation for Black History Month. I'm just simply going to read a proclamation. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration that recognizes and honors the significant contributions and achievements in rich cultural heritage of African Americans throughout history. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month provides an opportunity for all citizens to reflect on the past struggles and accomplishments of African Americans whose perseverance and resilience have shaped our nation and strengthened our community. And whereas, African Americans have played an integral role in the history of Pickwa, Ohio, contributing to its economic, cultural, educational, and civic growth. And whereas, we acknowledge the importance of fostering inclusivity, understanding, and respect among all people and recognizing that diversity is a source of strength for our community. And whereas, the city of Pickwa was committed to promoting equality, justice, and opportunity for all residents and encourages the ongoing study and appreciation of African American history and culture. Excuse me. Whereas, we honor the legacy of African American trailblazers, leaders, and everyday citizens who made a lasting impact on our city, state, and nation and reaffirm our commitment to building a more just and equitable society. Now therefore, I, Chris Lee, Mayor of the City of Pickwa, to hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the City of Pickwa. And encourage all residents to join in celebrating the rich history and contributions of African Americans and participate in activities and events that honor the important heritage. And that will be in the record. Next is the motion to approve the business agenda.
Mayor, I would like to move to amend the business agenda by withdrawing Resolution R-30-25 from the agenda tonight and adding a work session to discuss the zoning of Lot N-44250148 to appear prior to the reading of the consent agenda.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mayor, I would like to further amend the business agenda by moving in new business Resolution R-27, Resolution R-28, and Resolution R-29 to appear before Item 1 in new business, which was ordinance O-2-25.
I'm going to do the chapter fifty, okay. Motion was made. I need a second. Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
Which puts us into a work session.
A work session.
To discuss the zoning of Lot N-44, or sorry, Lot N-44250148. Do you want me to initiate the discussion?
Yeah, Kyle will handle that.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Actually, I think we need to move to adopt the amended.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt the amended business agenda.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the amended with both amendments, business agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Kyle, your work session.
Good evening. The resolution for consideration deals with a zoning map amendment to the City of Pickwa zoning map for a 5.079 acre split for parcel N-44250148. The property that we are speaking of is the water plant property. The water plant itself was actually purchased, the property was purchased by the City of Pickwa in 2013. At that time, it was zoned OS, open space zoning designation. In 2023, as part of code changes that occurred, the OS designation was not kept. And the property to this date does not have a clear zoning designation. Unfortunately, OS does not exist any longer in our zoning code. So this request was to provide a zoning designation to the parcel as that is a requirement of our development code that all parcels within the City of Pickwa have a zoning classification. With that, the planning commission did table this case originally. To give you a little history, they requested some additional time for consideration. The second meeting was held and they did recommend a conservation CN district, which was a recommendation against staff's recommendation of IH, IL, or CV. The... At this point in time, the city commission obviously would have the planning commission recommendation in front of them and the city staff's recommendation as well for the property. We have the five acres. We are focusing on the five acres because the split actually occurred. The remaining thirty-seven acres of the water plant, the city will have to bring back forward for a zoning designation similar to this process. But as of this time, it is really focused on the five acre parcel that we split. If there are any questions, I can certainly address them, but that is the request as before you this evening.
Kyle, the staff recommendation of the planning commission was initially IH, heavy industrial use, is that correct?
That is correct.
I think after a lot of concern and review from the commission and the public at large, there were some concerns over the possible usage of what IH might actually allow to happen at that location. Based off our intents for that location, do you think that zoning it as CV, civic use, would be an acceptable alternative to IH?
Yeah, so the original request was for IH. That was due to the fact that our wastewater plant and other facilities are in that zoning district. And I guess I didn't note, but the property is owned by the city, so all uses are, will be approved through the city process. But with that said, the CV district was the, after the case was tabled, it was brought back and staff recommended an IL or a CV. Either of those districts would permit the essential use, or the essential service, which is the substation proposal, as well as the water plant that exists on the site currently. So the civic would permit cemeteries, clubs, lodges, college universities, libraries, museums, places of worship, schools. And then again, the interpretation is that the essential service of a water plant and a potential power substation would be permitted as well as a use, but it would not permit any of those industrial uses that were a concern originally, which is why staff recommended that to ensure that there would not be any industrial uses on the property beyond, again, those, the water plant and a potential substation.
Yes, some of those, some of those possible uses under IH, which I'm reading off the Pickwa code right now, that would allow for acetylene or oxygen manufacturing. Does CV, would that allow for acetylene or oxygen manufacturing?
It would not.
One of the uses under IH is just as hazardous waste. Does something to do with hazardous waste, would that be covered under CV? Could you do that in a CV-zoned area?
It would not.
Coke ovens, which I believe is not the kind of coke that many other people are thinking. Could you do, could you have coke ovens operating under CV if that area was zoned CV?
You could not.
What about rubber and plastic production various? That you could do under IH. Could you do that under CV?
Again, no, you could not. The listed uses for CV are very limited, and I listed those previously, but no, you could not.
And then I'm going to give you two more of these. So under heavy industrial, you can do acid manufacturing, including corrosive acids. I didn't realize there was other kinds. Also, the manufacture of ammonia, chlorine, and bleaching powder. You can do those under IH. Can you do those under CV if we zone that CV?
You could not. You couldn't do those in IH either. Those are actually, you would have to get a special use for those, but again, no, you definitely cannot do them in CV.
Not even with a special use can you do them under CV?
You, correct. There is no special use that would allow you to do those in the CV.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Commissioners, I guess just for the discussion amongst ourselves, it seems that perhaps rezoning this to IH is a little extreme for what the plan was. It sounds like CV might be a better alternative for what we need it for and then also ensuring that in the future that nothing crazy happens in that lot of land. I would put forth that I'd be interested in hearing from the staff, a amended resolution stating as such that parcel, parcel N, or sorry, lot, yeah, lot parcel N-44250148 be zoned as CV, civic use. I think that would be a more appropriate zoning designation.
Any objections from commissioners?
So I would hope maybe you guys can get that onto our agenda at our next meeting.
I will work with our law director, yes.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, we'll end this work session as such. Next would be the consent agenda. Rules or conduct are part of the business agenda. We approve this.
Approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2025, regular city commission meeting. A resolution appointing a member to the park board and two resolutions appointing members to the energy board.
Can you name them?
Uh huh. To the park board is Bonnie Davis. Energy board is Sharon Lyons and Curtis Sawyer, both renewals.
Accept the motion for the consent agenda then.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I apologize, but may I also add thank you to those members who applied for those boards.
And are stepping up.
Yes, thank you.
Agreed. All right. Next on our agenda is old business. Ordinance number O-1-25, a second grading.
An ordinance to amend chapter fifty of the Pickwa code to update sanitation rates.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove ordinance number O-1-25 as it is no longer necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrosse?
Aye.
So... What have we had on this?
Twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Yes, we're moving up. Now we're on to new business. We'll go to resolution number R-27-25.
A resolution accepting annexation of 38.654 acres of land from Concord Township to the City of Pickwa.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commission. Thank you for entertaining the site of this evening. This item is related to the annexation of a subject tract of land, 38.65 acres. As noted, located in Concord Township. The owner of the property runs Upper Valley Development Company, previously brought forward their interest in annexing the property into the City of Pickwa Corporation Limits. On November 12th of 2024, an annexation agreement document was presented to the city commission, which essentially declared the property owner's intent and desire to annex into the community. The commission approved that annexation agreement, as did subsequently the Concord Township trustees, which cleared the way for the owner to be able to submit their annexation petition to the Miami County Court Commission, who likewise acknowledged the annexation petition and forwarded it to the city commission for final approval. And once it arrives here, there is a sixty-day wait period before which if we send it to the city commission. The sixty-day period slaps. We're now putting the item in front of the city commission for the final action of acceptance of the annexation. I would also note that on January 28th, the commission previously received the planning commission's recommendation for the zoning and approved the recommended zoning for this property. The applicant is here this evening. If you have questions, we're happy to respond as well.
Any questions from commissioners? Any questions from citizens? We'll start with Kim Heisler.
Hello, commissioners. Eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive, Kim Heisler. And this will probably be the same question that I have for like the next three, talking about the annexations and the boundary lines. I was just kind of curious if this annexation was going to be very similar to the others in which when we take over that land now from the county, are we still in a tiered process where like one, year one through three, we have to pay like eighty percent of the taxes had that property been utilized by industry and stuff like that? I guess that's my question, and that'll be my question for each one coming up here. And what does that amount look like?
So there's only one annexation item this evening. The other two are changes in boundaries as a result of annexations, and I can further explain that. But to your question, there's an annexation agreement in place with Concord Township for this particular tract of land, which is obviously located in the township. And it describes the proration of taxes or tax proceeds that are received over the first, I think it's eight years. And that is straight out of the auto revised statute. It's what's been baked into the annexation process by way of legislators. And so we simply acknowledge that in the annexation agreement that both parties agree that that's the ratios or percentages and how it would be shared for those first eight years. The amount is really dependent upon how it develops and what increase in valuations might occur. Otherwise, it's the percentages based on what it currently generates in terms of taxes.
Okay, so like if you have a business in there, it's going to obviously generate a lot more than just, you know, residential, right? And I guess another question is, on some of the other annexations, it went out, I believe, twelve years over a period of time. And I don't know if that had changed. I think that was like the, I don't know, off of Washington Road or something, but I was also curious about that. Another thing too, I wanted to mention, again, are we not videoing this? Is this, can you guys address that?
Yeah, you weren't here at the beginning, so I don't know.
I was.
He's been in the city and they sent out the video board to be fixed, so you weren't here when they said that.
I... Oh, you mean right at the very beginning before you went to executive session, you're right.
We're not live streaming, but Adam.
Okay, I just wanted to, yes, I missed that and thank you. Appreciate it.
So after the accusations that were intentionally breaking it, we actually have it out there being fixed right now.
It's getting fixed. Nicholas Smart.
Nicholas Smart, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue. Is this the property that is, let's say, at the corner of Farrington and Washington Roads? Is that Concord? Is that where it starts? No?
No. The property is located south of Farrington Road, along the west side of I-75. Probably there's an existing tract of land that gets down to the township and then this piece of land. So it's not abutting any roadways other than I-75.
Yeah, if you're heading out of Pickwa, going towards the new Sheets, it would be before the entrance ramp onto the highway.
On the opposite side of the highway.
Yeah.
Opposite Sheets.
Opposite Sheets. Yeah.
On the west side, or on the east side of twenty-five.
Yeah.
Sorry?
They said on the east side of twenty-five, is that correct?
On the west side.
On the west side of twenty-five, okay.
Okay. And this is through Brunns?
Brunns Upper Valley Realty LLC. Is the owner of the property.
But no other information besides that as to what could possibly be going in in the future businesses?
Other than, there's been multi-way annexations in this area and there's a significant amount of acreage that has been positioned for economic development opportunities. Advanced manufacturing, technology-type uses. There's a variety of other uses that could potentially happen. Those are the ones that are most desirable and the possible percent.
Yes. Something, something that is, let's say, more geared towards high-end, maybe white-collar jobs. I suppose the residents would like more of, to be well-informed of whatever type of business that may be, should they have to go back and acquire any schooling for that type of job? Or, you know, to acquire that type of job, to work in those facilities. I guess what I'm asking is, we were allowed, you know, to know an advanced Hilton Hotel and Fazoli's and that type of thing going in those areas. But I guess, no, if they don't know what's supposed to be going in there, I guess we can't predict, of course. But if you say it's for higher-end, like manufacturing, I mean, if you guys know what's going in there, I mean, it would be beneficial to the community and to the residents first in case there would be some kind of schooling that is involved, so we would have the opportunity towards acquiring these jobs over kind of like outsiders.
I think it's important to know how the development process works. I think it's important to know how the development process works, to respond to your question. Owners control their property, and when they determine they have an interest in developing that land, they seek annexation to have access to the city services, water, sewer, all those things necessary to be able to develop the property so that it can be a higher better use, whatever type. That doesn't mean there's an imminent in-use, it just means they're trying to get it positioned so that it could be attractive to a potential end user. In that process, there's usually, the developer will begin putting together marketing material and looking for the types of in-uses that are suitable for the site, that can meet their expectations and the city's. We've worked closely with our development partners to try to facilitate outcomes that are most positive for our community, whether in terms of the tax base and the types of jobs created. We also work very closely with our workforce development partners at Edison State and Upper Valley Career Center and Pickwa Community Schools to identify opportunities for them to provide programming curriculum to re-skill folks for new positions that maybe require some skill sets that they currently don't have. Tech cred is a program from the state of Ohio that's highly regarded and used by a number of employers in the community, where they will engage with Edison. Edison will put together the program to provide those employees with the new skills they need to fill those new positions that maybe have been created or because of changes in modernization or whatever they didn't previously have. So those are ongoing efforts that are happening every day. So this is just one part of the process and one piece of that puzzle.
Nick, your time is up.
Okay, sounds exciting.
No other questions for public comment? With that said, I'll entertain a motion for Commissioner.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution R-27-25.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Next is resolution number R-28-25.
A resolution authorizing a petition to the Board of Miami County Commissioners for a change in the boundary lines of Concord Township.
Commissioners, this item would allow the law director to petition the Miami County Board of Commission to effectively remove the tract that was previously discussed, wanting its annexation be complete after the 10-day wait period for a resolution, so that the tract of land is only in the City of Pickwa Corporation Limits and no longer a part of the Concord Township boundaries. This requirement comes by way of the annexation agreement that the city previously executed with the township, in which both parties agreed that it was preferable to achieve this outcome. I would describe this as almost a housekeeping matter that follows the annexation items.
So we're basically asking them to just change the boundary lines in there?
Correct. The law director petitions the county commissioners to change the official jurisdictional boundaries to reflect the annexation change.
Any questions from commissioners? Kim Heisler?
I think he addressed it before.
Okay, Nick? No other questions, I'll accept the motion.
I approve the approval of resolution R-28-25.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Next is resolution number R-29-25.
A resolution authorizing a petition to the Board of Miami County Commissioners for a change in the boundary lines of Washington Township.
Commissioners, this item is identical to the previous item, only it pertains to the 329.824 acres previously approved for annexation on January 28th. Again, this is the follow-up item that allows the law director to go make the formal petition to change the boundaries and the official records.
Questions from commissioners? Nicholas Smart? Kim? Okay. I'll accept the motion.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I want to get back on schedule finally. Next is the first order of new business, which is ordinance number O-2-25. First reading.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 50 of the Pickwa Code.
Thank you. Chapter 50 of the Pickwa Code needs modified to support the transition of sanitation services to an outside vendor. The proposed language updates include adding a definition of approved service provider to clarify that the city or contractor may be utilized for services. Modified modifications to accommodate the contractor's service model and adjustments to the rates according to the RFP submitted by the contractor. As part of the transition to contracted services, the city is proposing to subsidize to the senior discount program that will lower the rate adjustments from those proposed by the contractor. The city will utilize funds from the reserve and the sanitation funds to offset approximately $10,000, $14,000 per year over the next five years for this purpose, for the residents that are on that program.
Any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I believe in that last part, you were discussing what was gonna happen with the balance of the enterprise fund. The sanitation enterprise fund would consist of the current cash balance and revenue generated from the liquidation of assets. And then, this ordinance would provide that some of that liquidated enterprise fund would then go to pad out the program for, was it seniors? Okay. Does this, what's the total value of that? That would be applied to that particular program in this ordinance?
Over the five years, it would be between $10,000 and $14,000 per year.
Okay.
For that program.
Does this ordinance provide other uses for the enterprise fund at the moment?
So, so out of those enterprise funds, the UBO expenses will continue to be covered.
What are those costs?
By that, the UBO expenses for 2025 would be looking at $176,390 in '26, $185,210 in '27, $194,470 in '28, $204,193 in '29.
So potentially a million for five years, about, about-ish, $2 million over 10 years?
So, yeah, look at all that, the fund balance at the beginning of '25, and this is without the sale of the vehicles, because we don't know what that is, you know, would be $3,158,455. At the end of '29, that fund balance by supporting everything we just discussed would be $1,115,929.
And that money going to the UBO, that's the utility billing office, is that correct?
Correct.
So if that, because under the Rumkey contract, Pickwa, the utility billing office through Pickwa is still going to be collecting my bill for trash and then sending that to Rumkey, is that correct?
So Rumkey will be billing us, and then the customer will get billed from that.
So from a citizen's perspective, you're still getting billed by the City of Pickwa, just like you are now. And that Pickwa is, I'm getting billed, I'm gonna send that money to Rumkey. So, that money that's getting used to go to the utility budget or billing office, that's to support its operation, is that correct? So what would happen if we didn't send that money to support its operation? Would that affect my other bills, like my water and sewer and stormwater bills?
Yeah, so the internal fees would then have to be distributed evenly amongst the energy, so you'd pick with power, water, and sewer bills and stormwater. So they would have to pick up about $200,000 a year of internal funds.
Okay, so by not using those funds for that purpose, we'd potentially be increasing the price of other bills for other utilities.
It would be added on to the rate structure of the other funds, yes.
So I just wanted to clarify, Mayor, that we're, that money for that purpose is being used to try to soften the overall bill, billing structure to the citizen. Mr. City Manager, it sounded like it'd be a remainder of about a million dollars plus estimated, plus whatever cash is generated from the sale of assets. Is there, does this ordinance provide anything about that money at the moment?
So currently, our financial policies and reserve would speak to maintaining a fund balance so that it would, so we'd be able to operate.
Is there a way to use that money without bringing forward another ordinance or to like transfer it into the general fund for some other purpose?
There's no way to transfer it. Even if we brought it before you, the fund has to, or the balance has to remain in that fund and cannot be used for other purposes.
It can't be used for like lock nine or any other part or anything?
It cannot be used for anything except sanitation services.
And how do you define sanitation services? Is that something that a government auditor is gonna come and double-check that, you know, we didn't just list something as a sanitation service, but it really was something else?
That's correct. So every year when we have our audit, they go through that and make sure that the enterprise funds operate separately from the general fund and other governmental activities.
So so far, out of that remaining enterprise balance fund, we'd be using it to pad out senior services that we're currently providing, that now Rumkey can provide, and then also trying to make sure that we're leveling out the billing office so that its operations can be maintained without increasing the price of other utilities that aren't related to sanitation. And then the rest of that money is stuck in that enterprise fund unless we bring forward another ordinance, which would then bring, you know, that brings it to the public for transparency. But this current ordinance isn't doing that at the moment, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions from commissioners? Jeff Grimes.
Jeff Grimes, 1512 Marston Drive. So, we're on the R-30-25, is that what we're talking about?
No.
We're on O-2-25.
Okay, so you guys got me all confused on what's going on. I'm not sure why we skipped to that.
We amended, when we amended, we said this, you were here, that we amended it and then changed the order of how we were gonna present this.
So I'm just concerned that if we're farming this out to Rumkey, that there is not an opt-out option for the citizens that do not want to use Rumkey. If you guys aren't providing the service, how can you force the citizens to use something like that? I don't think that is, I think it's against the law, maybe called coercion.
Actually, it's the opposite. The citizens forced us by putting that in the charter. The charter forces us to provide sanitation services.
But you're not providing it now.
Do honor. They have to provide them, it just says that we have to provide them.
You're forcing somebody to take something that we don't want, for one thing, and there should be an opt-out if you don't want to use Rumkey. I just think you guys are opening yourself up to stuff that you don't want to deal with. If you, if the city of-
That's not adominous.
Pardon?
That's not adominous, what did you mean by that?
I just don't think that it's legal for you to force somebody to take a service that you are not providing. So, I, if you remember correctly, I do believe that you passed that we are gonna keep the City of Pickwa, and we had all these numbers messed up. Now, now we've got all kinds of new numbers, and I'm just, I'm just not satisfied with what's going on. If you don't, if the City of Pickwa is not providing the citizens a service, then how can you force us to use that service? It's Rumkey, it's not the City of Pickwa.
The lawyers disagree. If you can find a lawyer that agrees with you, maybe you got a case.
So once again, you don't care about what the citizens of Pickwa think?
We listen to the citizens, and we pass the Rumkey ordinance.
You listen to the citizens, and you guys didn't pass it. Then we had this emergency meeting where all the numbers were fudged.
No, what happened was that we had significant resignations in the department, and we felt like we needed to move ahead.
Now, there's another whole different issue. But like I said, you heard from the citizens, we don't want Rumkey, now we're gonna have Rumkey. So did, did anybody, did you guys see any of the proposals that were sent out to Waste Management or Republic?
No, supposedly, the only, when we got back, we sent out proposals, only when we got back was from Rumkey.
And did you see the proposals that were sent out? Were they sent out certified mail? How long did they have to respond?
The RFPs are not sent out, it's an advertisement, and then anybody that's interested in providing services responded. We only had one responded.
The RFP process is legally mandated, correct?
It's, yes, it's a control.
There's no way for us to have hidden that from Waste Management?
No. It's been advertised.
Okay, thank you.
Kim Heisler?
Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. I'll follow up with that. And what exactly is an RFP? Just real short, what does that mean?
Request for proposal.
Okay, so how many RFPs were actually sent out, I guess is the question?
Again, no RFPs were sent out. It's advertised, it's a request for proposal, and they're not sent out. It's advertised so that we can solicit people to submit a proposal.
Okay, so was Rumkey possibly said, hey, check out this RFP and maybe no one else? That's just a question.
Are you suggesting that we do due diligence on behalf of other publicly traded companies?
I'm just suggesting that the whole way this thing went down, when we wanted to keep it in-house.
You wanted to keep it in-house.
Okay, I wanted to- Tom?
What?
We all need to be treated with respect, and when you talk down to people, that's not very kind. And being in-
A lot of people wanted us to go with Rumkey.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so anyways, I wanted it to go, to be kept in town, right? Along with a lot of other people, voted here to keep it in, within our city, and we actually made that happen. You guys made it happen. It happened. The very next week, just like Jeff had mentioned, we actually had three options, didn't we? What was the first option? Well, keep it as is, I think is what the first option was. The second one was, actually, I don't remember what the- We had three options. The second was Rumkey. A couple of us actually said, what happens to this third option? Are we gonna be able to hear it as well? And you guys reassured us, and even the city manager at the beginning said, yes, we are gonna present all three of these ideas. So what happened? We got to the second one, Rumkey was chosen. Very next thing that happened, before you guys could say anything, making sure that someone didn't say it too quickly, Mr. City Manager spoke up and said, hey, we want to remove this from the table, speaking out of turn.
I told him we're gonna do that, and we had to vote on it, and so it was voted on by a majority of the commissioners to remove it. It's on the record.
Yes, but he told us the third option was going to be mentioned after multiple of us. That was the one where we could choose who we could use and who not. So for you guys to sit there and say that we chose Rumkey and we're under that, I mean, you need to look, because you took our voices away by taking away that third option after you said- after you said we were going to be able to hear it. That's, that's another thing. And what is, what is the reason, reasoning that we have to have our billing go through the city of Pickwa? Because I've actually, I, I don't know, I've not checked it out. I've heard some fa, folks say that Rumkey charges in like quarterly increments and stuff like that. I don't, I think they were supposed to be charged enough monthly, but my question is, why does it have to go through the city of Pickwa? Because it seems like that is a way that more money could be taken out without our oversight. And, and then the other question is, why would that extra sanitation fund go into leveling out the billing office? Where, what, I don't, I don't understand that, what, what that means. And I know you guys were using jargon and stuff, saying UBOs, and I don't know what that is.
Utility Business Office.
That's why I made a attempt to very specifically explain what that meant.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but it just made my mind a little bit more confused, so I thought I'd ask you, and I appreciate that. But-
Do you want, when you get done?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know why that we have to go through that when we could go directly to them. I don't know if that's what's holding us into the contract of not being able to say they can't have it or not. I would, you know, I would like to have my own choice if I was doing Rumkey like Jeff and opt out for it and spend $5 to take it to the dump if I need to. That, that is it. Thank you.
Can you explain why the billing is the way it is, Mr. City Manager?
So the billing could have either gone through Rumkey or gone through the city, and it's a value proposition, it's more cost effective to go through the city. And so for the beginning of the term of this contract, we've chosen to keep it in-house with Utility Business Office. It's a, it's a savings over-
Can I hold, can I, can I hold you up a moment?
No, your, your time is up.
Cost effective for us or for you guys?
Your time is up, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
They, they didn't bid on the billing aspect of managing the contract. So that was, we, we chose the contract knowing that we will keep the Utility Business Office billing.
The city, the city budget is, is the city's money. So anything that's cost effective for the city budget is, it's, I mean, this is not like our pocket money. If it's cost effective for the city budget, it's cost effective for the citizens. So the, the question of you or us doesn't make sense.
Mayor?
Yes?
If, if I may. Mr. Urbanorfer, can you do me a huge favor? As this is the first reading, and at the second reading, can you bring back to the commission how much it would impact the rates if the billing for sanitation was to go through Rumkey versus the city?
They, they didn't bid on that, so we'd have to find out. It would be part of the second renewal if we were to move to have them bill it. I'm not certain they would divulge those numbers until that time.
Could you also return to us a estimate of staffing reduction that would have occurred in the utility billing office, were we to not run this through that office?
So the staffing would remain the same because of the other functions that they provide for the water, stormwater, sanitation and power. However, the, the support that the sanitation fund provides, which there, there are fees that we can't do anything about. For instance, the auditor fee, which is when we get our books audited every year, there's an expense with that, the overhead administrative IT insurance, bad debt that gets written off from people that choose not to pay their, their sanitation bills, things of that nature. So those are reoccurring annual fees that we're going to have to deal with, either way.
My apologies.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Yeah, don't worry. Um, I, Ms. Heisler, thank you. And a couple of things that you mentioned up here gave me rise to, to questions. Number one, you mentioned those RFPs. When we send out an RFP, where is that published?
We don't send it out. It's a digital publication and people sign up for notification of any contract that comes up.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have-
This goes out the evening?
It's part of our procurement. It's on the website.
The second question I have, and yes, I know that, that Commissioner Holland, thankfully, got to step in and set things right, and have us put the key box on, on that third option. But I was just curious, what motivation did you have for stepping up and going, oh, we need to have this taken, table taken off?
It's just a matter of process. At some point, when you've already voted on something, that may be the recommendation.
We could have had options two and three.
In combination, yeah.
We could have had both. And you opted, you said you'd give, you'd give them a chance to hear it, and immediately, no, we're not going to hear.
I would put forward that Mr. Urbanorfer spoke out of turn at that moment, and I let him know in that moment that it wasn't his, I think we all, thing to-
Right.
Pull off. But then the commission did vote on the record to remove it.
Well, I have some-
All right, Nicholas Mart.
What's next? Nicholas Mart, 1433 Covington Avenue. I know some citizens have spoke up tonight about their desire to possibly opt out as citizens. Does the city of Pickwa, the city as an entity, have any opt-out provisions as, in this contract with Rumkey? Any clauses within the, within the contractual obligations? You know, if we, if we don't like their service, you know, like after the first few years or something like that?
Right.
Can we, you know, have, is there a, something in the clause that would say, well, the city of Pickwa is not satisfied with Rumkey's services, so we'd like to opt out at this time, not go with Rumkey, and take back the services and go in-house?
The contract is for five years. We have an option to renew for an additional five years. If the commission chose not to renew for the additional five years, it could be put back out again?
If Rumkey's performance was so subpar that that was the case, they would likely be in breach of the services that they'd agreed to in the contract, in which case, like every business contract, they'd be subject to a lawsuit and we would be able to find some remediation about that in a court.
So, yeah, it's a five-year contract and then we can review it at, at that time. Okay, thank you.
No other questions from citizens?
I've got another question for the city manager. Did, um, is that, is the con, we, we, when we passed that a couple of weeks ago, that was authorizing you to finalize the negotiation on the contract, not a particular contract itself, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that, have you gone through that process of finalizing that negotiation?
A lot of that has to do with the equipment and the start date and how we transition and phase those services over.
Per the city charter, what role does the commission or the utility board have in reviewing that contract before you execute it as final?
Well, the RFP has been accepted. Yeah, so the, my auth, there is authorization that was afforded to city manager to enter into the agreement. Basically, is to finalize all of those details to go from the in-house services to the contracted services, which is the transition phase.
I would just ask you and Brian that whenever you get close or get done with it, just review any of the details that maybe got more locked in or were slightly adjusted with the utility board. That, so that way they can make sure that that was what they had agreed to.
Yeah, so the utility board, everything was agreed to upfront, and that's why they made a recommendation to move to a contracted service. The finer details of start date, disposition of equipment and things like that are just the finer details. It's, it's things that they had already heard.
But like, the, the broad part about, you know, how many days they're going to go pick up and what they're going to pick up and how much, that's all kind of-
Yeah, there's no change in service. It's actually an enhancement in service. It's already been settled, it was in the RFP.
And you will let us know about the pricing if they were to build?
I, again, I don't think I can get that from them because they did not respond in the RFP, and for me to ask them, that's trade secrets, how they price things. And so it would come up again if we decide in year five to have them do the in-house billing. At that point, we could ask for, for them to submit a proposal on it.
All right, thank you. This is, serve as a first reading on this. Next is ordinance number O-3-25, first reading.
An ordinance to adopt revisions of Chapter 90, animals to permit backyard chickens.
I'm going to chance for this or do you, do you want, you want it or do you see?
I'll let Kyle.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So I just wanted to walk through a little bit of how we got to where we are today. If you will recall, in 2023, the city did go through a similar process, modifying Section 90 to the Code of Ordinances. We went through the Planning Commission, we went through the City Commission. And at that point in time, the language that was proposed did not move forward. That was brought back up again. Our request was brought back up in January of this year by Commissioner Simmons. And so that language was put together with our, prior to January, with our previous law director. And that language was brought to the Planning Commission for their consideration in January. As part of that meeting in January, the Planning Commission did hear from the public for a substantial amount of time. They did make requests for modifications to that language and tabled the case to have staff go back and redraft language based on those comments, the concerns that they heard from the residents. After that, it came back on their February 11th Planning Commission meeting. The, was again substantial discussion, and the language was again modified to meet the conversation and the requests of those there, as well as the Planning Commission. But what you have before you is language that modifies the Section 90, which is the animals section of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Pickwa. And generally, I won't go into each of these changes, but functionally, that includes a new approval for people in single-family residential properties to have chickens, and raise chickens on the premises. They are required to get a permit that has a $10 fee that is valid for one year. It does also require an inspection that occurs within 10 days of the issuance of the permit by the city. They have to have proof of a veterinarian. They have to have educational requirements, so proof of an educational class related to chickens is also required. And some of the standards that are in place or would be in place is the property must have a minimum dimension to fulfill the standards of the section. So that means a certain lot size. Residents can have six chickens only. No roosters can be kept on the property. There is no slaughtering of chickens on the property. No person may sell eggs at their home unless they are approved for a home occupation. Chickens must be provided with an elevated enclosure. There is a number of items about that enclosure, including setbacks and the distance from the property line, as well as to other residential properties. There is a regulation about food and the storage of that food. There's a regulation about waste associated with chickens. And then finally, there is a regulation that notes explicitly that chickens are not permitted in historic districts, which includes the Caldwell Historic District and the Downtown Historic District. With that, there was substantial discussion of the Planning Commission meeting, over two separate meetings. The Planning Commission did recommend in a four to zero vote the language that you have before you for consideration. All right, questions that I can answer, I certainly will try to do so?
Well, me, I-
Yes, get ready to.
Hi, Kyle. I have to publicly apologize because I gave that man just a load of grief on the phone. But after we went through the, when I got this language, I said, I'm all on board. I've already completed the OSU Extension Course.
Who else?
Online. Mr. Mayor has it.
Sure is, I completed it.
And I ain't going to give it to you tonight, but I got my first two years right there, buddy. And as far as inspections go, if you time it just right, and you, and there might be an omelet in there for you. I don't-
You can give, you can't sell eggs, but you can give eggs.
Oh, there you go.
I would recommend not giving gifts to public officials coming in. And just so it's clear, I won't give the inspections, it will be our staff, but, but point made.
Any other comments? You're, you're good?
Bye-bye.
You had any comments?
No comments.
I have several. I just pulled the article from the newspaper. Over now, we believe that house cats are susceptible to bird flu. I think those of you who have cats, it might be advantageous to at least have us find out what's going to happen with the bird flu issue. It seems to be expanding, and we now have cows being, cows being tested. We're going to have cats probably being tested. And I think timeliness is, is not good. I have several other concerns in terms of property values. You live next to a house that has, has chickens. I'm not sure your value of your house is going to be the same. I have concerns for noise issues. I have concerns for other animals that will be, either are in the city or will be coming into the city, including coyotes, rats, groundhogs, skunks, opossums, coyotes, and, and snakes. We've had testimony about all those things being concerned. I have concerns for neighbors who have cats and dogs. I am concerned that that will become a point of agitation for, for that. I'm concerned that the compliance issues will be dumped on the, on the city compliance officers who already are very busy with other concerns, including grass in the, in the spring and, and housing issues all through the year. So I'm concerned about that. And we've talked already about butchering. I, I made a comment earlier in the meeting that I'm old enough to remember when my grandmother strung a chicken up on the clothesline and attempted chicken to its eternal reward in my backyard. The good news is, that's not going to be happening. That's slaughtering of chickens is not a, not a, a thing that's allowed under this ordinance. So I'm, I'm concerned about those issues and, and I will, I will not, I am not in favor of the chicken ordinance. The other thing I would mention is that we have 20 locations in Pickwa who believe that they are somehow exempt from having these chickens in their areas. And the only one that I think we've mentioned so far is the Caldwell and the Downtown Historic District. The others areas are, have HOAs, but the city is not in a position to enforce HOAs. And so if you believe that you live in, you live in Eagle's Nest and, and some of your neighbor wants to have chickens, your HLA is not going to prohibit it because it's going to take enforcement by some other, some other entity other than the city of Pickwa for that. So with those concerns, I am certainly not in favor of the chicken ordinance.
Yeah, no comment, just a question. Kyle, I believe I heard you say that there's a regulation for the waste from the chickens. What, what is that regulation?
So the regulation states it is number 12. And it states, "Waste associated with raising chickens must be disposed of by being bagged separately and removed from the premises by a trash, trash collection service not less than once per week. No waste associated with raising or keeping chickens may be used as compost or otherwise disposed of by means of other than removal of the waste from the premises."
Well, then that led to a second question. Do we know if the removal of chicken waste is something that our new service provider will do?
I do know that because we had to ask. So as part of the process, we did request that information from Rumkey and were made aware that it, it is able to be bagged and removed as long as it meets the required weight of the, of the trash queue.
Okay, and who is going to be responsible for making sure said waste is removed possibly?
I, I cannot answer that. Obviously, this program, staff it, at the beginning of this, staff made it abundantly clear, our biggest concern with a program like this is our ability to enforce it. We felt very strongly that if this regulation was going to move forward, our staff needed permits, our staff needed the ability to inspect, and our staff needs the ability to both protect those that are permitted to do it, but also- the ability to both protect those that are permitted to do it, but also make sure that we are able to deal with situations that are not appropriate. So I will say, fortunately, I would imagine it will be on our code compliance staff to attempt to try to manage that portion of this regulation.
Does this language with the permitting structure allow for or create enough revenue to possibly hire the chicken enforcer?
No, this the cost structure here is extremely low. It will not cover even the cost of the permit review, let alone the cost of the permit review, the inspection and reinspection and all different portions of that. This this fee of ten dollars is obviously not able to do that. We won't be covering the cost of our existing staff, let alone have the revenue to be able to purchase or be able to purchase be able to fund additional staff. How high would that fee need to be to at least address the additional burden on the current staff? I unfortunately cannot put a number on that because we don't know how many people will will move forward with a permit. If we knew generally if we had a number similar to like zoning certificates, we know pretty much how many permits we do per year. I can make an estimate. If we have two hundred people do permits and it's ten dollars for each person, that becomes much more of a burden than if we have five. So the challenge obviously for us is every single person that does it and we only raise ten dollars per person, it becomes more of a financial burden, the more that people were to to use it. But without knowing how many people are going to actually do it, it is impossible for me to put a number on that. Thank you.
I myself brought this legislation up back in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and it was voted down by the commission at that point in time. It was done so to give people an option. People came to me, requested the ability to have residential chickens. I thought, I may not personally, because my wife, I'm not allowed. I'm scared of it.
I can't vote that one on.
Exactly. So but I still voted against her interest because I think if people want to do it, they should have the right to do it as long as it's done in a good manner. Commissioner Simmons brought it back up. I think it's a great idea. I think it's such a good idea. Wanted to learn more about it. I took the class. He suggested to me that in the Ohio State University branch office has a course on residential chickens. I took the class. I thought it was a great class. Asked it. It's three hours, but it was worth it. It's now I know more about chickens than I thought I'd ever.
At a cost.
At a cost. It was.
The cost of that course online was like twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five bucks, and I'm okay with that.
I would I would before that the chicken supporters that have spoken to me have been universally offended at the idea that they might be mistreating their chickens or creating this terrible environment for their chickens. And a lot of people who have had chickens, either in rural areas or questionable legal circumstances inside the city, they have shown me and told me about how they take care of their chickens. And I would just encourage that we're this we're this to pass that the chicken lovers out there, that you help moderate your community and that if you see people doing it the wrong way, mistreating their chickens, which is I'm sure abhorrent to you, let them know, maybe offer to help them or do something about it. That would be, I think, a good, sustainable way for this to move forward is for the the community to kind of enforce itself, to enforce good practices.
Public comment, Nicholas Mark.
Nicholas Mark, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue. I just want to state that I'm not explicitly not explicitly against chicken ownership at this time. I do agree with some of Mr. Vedder's sentiments on this issue, particularly the drawing in of foxes and coyotes into the interior of the city, which is why I think that we should maybe look upon maybe because I know you talked about the waste associated with coop, but we didn't talk specifically about any deceased chickens, I don't believe. So I think a deceased chicken would have to be put in some kind of sealed sealed airtight like baggie so that these these potential animals don't, you know, think that this is a haven to come and just eat out a house, home, all this stuff. They they can smell in our trash cans. So that's one caveat I would add just for deceased chickens. I know that might been might be a popular sentiment, but you know, it's some some way that I feel. And the the course you're referring to, I believe that's an online course. However, in planning commission, we, I thought, decided on more of a hands-on course, actually going to experience this chicken rearing, like a week-long course, like hands-on. So you get the full experience, you know, of cleaning out the coop. You know, I don't know. I don't know if chickens require heat lamps or you know what it is during winter time, but that that could be another expense. It's just kind of getting your hands dirty other than taking an online course or reading a book about it. You know, if this doesn't play out in the long run, could we elect Mr. Vedder as the chicken enforcer? If things get out of hand, we. I want you to be the chicken enforcer if things get out of hand. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I want your K nine uniform.
Yeah, I want a new tag. Yeah, just a just a point of comment. The only person in Ohio who has actually caught bird flu and caught from alley cat chickens.
I believe last time this came up, Mr. Mayor, there was a discussion amongst the chicken community that they might have some kind of self-education course. They might band together to create a group for that. I would again encourage that we're this to pass that the people who know how to do it, let people who don't and who are interested, if you guys create your own kind of certified course that was compliant, that might be the best way to do it because you could get hands-on. I believe Mr. Simmons has a Commissioner Simmons has a similar model through radios, right? Maybe if you're radios and chickens.
Well, actually, I have one of our local residents who lives outside the city who has chickens, and she said, hey, if you want if you want some hands-on, you're more welcome to come out. So yeah, hook those scoop chicken poop and feed them.
Just a final comment. I went to shop the other morning and I got a dozen eggs for four thirty-eight. So anybody who's talking about seven-dollar eggs, twelve-dollar eggs, they not shop at the right place.
All right. Kim Heiser.
Kim.
Anne.
I would just add, Mayor, that I might be interested in an amendment that says you do have to scoop at least one scoop of chicken poop before you're allowed to have one. That might be a good filter.
This is the first reading, so if you want to do that.
Kim Heiser, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive, and I missed a lot of this conversation. However, I think it should be up to the people to be able to choose what they can have and what they can't have. I don't think it should matter that your neighbor wants you to have it or not want to have it. I don't think it matters that they make little little noises when dogs bark and then the other dog barks in the middle of the night or even dumpsters being dumped at five-thirty in the morning. I really don't think that matters. As for the smell, if you're going by those big, huge barns, they stink. Five birds is probably not gonna even be any different than smelling your dog poop as you walk by or maybe even walking out of the bathroom. So I think you should leave it to the people. Give the power back for once. Thanks.
All right. No other public comment and no other comment from commissioners. This will serve as a first reading. No, last of the on our agenda is resolution number R dash thirty-one dash twenty-five.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order for three marked police cruisers in upfitting costs.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. This is just a request as part of our fleet replacement plan, purchase three two twenty-twenty-five Dodge Durango pursuit vehicles to the fleet and then replacing the vehicles being replaced were purchased in twenty-twenty. You see the cost, the budgeted amount, and then actual three vehicles would come to a total of one hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars with the remaining funds being allocated towards the upfitting of the car to purchase additional equipment. This is about the upfitting fee is about six thousand more than previous years due to the fact that one of the cars has to have a new end car body camera system installed to get into compliance. We did put it out for bid and received three bids back. Sherry's Chrysler Dodge Jeep was a little bit higher than Montross, which is up in Cleveland area. But because of the fact that they're local and the expense that would be involved if we're gonna purchase three vehicles, we would have to send four employees up to Cleveland to retrieve these vehicles. The cost would be offsetting. So if we are request to purchase locally with Sherry's, get these vehicles.
Any questions from commissioners?
What what led you to choose that make model?
The rest of our fleet are Dodge Durangos and this leave after this, we would have two left in four rooms. So it would just be consistent with not only your setup of your vehicle for the experience with maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? What's the average mileage on the twenty-twenty models? Over a hundred thousand, I would think.
It ranges between about eighty-nine thousand, I believe is the lowest one, with the highest one being about a hundred fifteen thousand currently. But you gotta understand, if we order these today, you know, it's a ten-week build time, and then by the time you get the other cars outfitted, that could be another three months. So we're still looking at several months before we be able to put them in service.
It's not mileage that kills those cars, it's the idle time.
Yeah, that's part of the equation, yes.
All right.
Mayor.
We got a public comment. Kim Heiser.
Hey, Kim Heiser.
Here I am. When I was in school, I did get attendance record. So just saying. I did have a question. Three new vehicles, and I'm sure it's already been appropriated and stuff like that. And looking at all the money expenditures and stuff, are we absolutely positively sure that we need to get three new vehicles?
We would be bringing a proposal to they forward if we didn't think that was the case.
Okay, and I think I had spoke to you quite some time ago. And can you explain of the vehicles we have, like how much usage they're getting? Are there any ever just sitting stagnant, not being used, or a group of them sitting aside waiting to get repaired or?
We have thirteen patrol cars in the fleet and fourteen, if you're counting the K nine vehicle, which would obviously is assigned to one officer that has a K nine. But so we have six to seven officers that work a shift. So half of our fleet is in is in service from six AM to six PM. And then when night shift comes on, they are driving the other half of the fleet and therefore the cars aren't running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So that's why you have the number of cars that you have in your patrol fleet. The only vehicles that sit idle, as you were assuming what you're describing, would be our detective vehicles that they're only used eight hours a day, and we have four of those.
Okay, so like the ones that are actually marked police, is that what you're considering your fleet?
Yes.
Okay.
Patrol fleet.
Okay.
Any motion to approve?
Mayor, I would move that we approve resolution R dash three-one dash two-five.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our gender agenda. I'm losing it. It hasn't been a long bit. City manager report.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to address the commission about an important issue at the state level that could affect the Pickwa community. I have a prepared statement because it's a little bit lengthy. But government Governor DeWine in the budget proposal released earlier this month suggesting eliminating the fund from municipalities that voters approved in twenty-three as part of recreational marijuana law. The issue was brought before the Ohio Senate in Senate Bill fifty-six last month. The state want the state was to provide municipalities with thirty-six percent of the ten percent tax collected on cannabis sales within the city limits. Local governments, including Pickwa, decided to allow recreational marijuana sales within their communities based on the understanding that funds would come back to local control to best serve individual needs of the community. If the proposed budget on the Senate bill are enacted, the city will lose between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars in revenue per year from the sale of cannabis within a city limit. The Pickwa City Commission expected to receive these funds, which were previously slated for use to support our park system and hence the reason you allowed the dispensaries in the first place. Governor DeWine is now proposing that the state keep the entirety of the ten percent tax and add another ten percent tax that the state would then maintain. He is suggesting the funds be used for jail construction and other initiatives. Even if some of the funding would be used for statewide initiatives impacting Pickwa, the proposal takes away the city's autonomy to decide how the funds are best used for the community. I would urge the commissioners and the residents to contact contact your state representatives, encourage them to maintain the existing revenue for host communities promised to the voters in two thousand and twenty-three. Additionally, the city commission should consider a resolution opposing the state legislation to fully demonstrate the dissatisfaction with the proposed budget and changes of the program promised to the local communities and hence the reason we brought the dispensaries here.
All right, thank you. I'm all glad we didn't what's ours. We did put those dispensaries here to recoup the costs so that we could apply it to parks or wherever we saw.
Yeah, that sure that sure sounds like a parlor trick to state government just now where they they tricked us into building all of these dispensaries, saying they're gonna give some of the money, and then as soon as we did, now they want it back.
May I interject without my comments? They're going to vote on fifty this Senate bill tomorrow. Our state Senator Steve Huffman was one of the architects of this Senate bill. Please call his office tomorrow and let him know how unfavorably we treat that Senate bill because there are a lot of other rights that all of the citizens in Ohio voted on that they want to take away as part of this Senate bill.
What's the number of the Senate bill?
I think it's fifty-six.
Fifty-six, yeah.
Senate bill fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Bringing after our attention.
Yes, sir. Next are commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner DeBros.
Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to read into the record and then I will submit a written copy to the clerk from the Commissioners Committee on the Fire Training Facility. Dear City of Pickwa Commissioners, this letter serves as a written progress report from the Commissioners Committee on the Fire Training Facility summarizing the committee's activities since our last update to the city commission on December third, two thousand and twenty-four. The committee is still in the process of drafting the report. We continue to use our outline as a guide. December was a slower month for us as we entered the holiday season and New Year, but we still are committed to seeing this project through to the end for the community. We anticipate. We anticipate making public records requests as well as interview requests soon. We would like to hear more from those who have firsthand knowledge of the activities that took place at the former water treatment plant. The committee had its last meeting on December nineteenth to discuss progress and get input from the community. We are trying to balance the workload with our duty to be transparent to the public who care deeply about this project. At this time, we do not have our next meeting scheduled. Sincerely, David Roth, Chair, Joe Thompson, Vice Chair, Jim Roth, and Jennifer Drack.
Thank you.
And the, uh, second thing that I have this evening, Mayor, is I received a message from, uh, Mr. Vonier, um, down in the utility building office, um, to let, or to ask me to let everyone know that the, um, refuse department did run yesterday, uh, and they will operate on the normal schedule this week. Uh, the calendar that was published on the website and handed out in the office shows a modified schedule for this week, um, due to the holiday. However, they did actually run yesterday. Um, it, it, he goes on to say that the office is opening, uh, miscollection service orders for those that didn't get the message that they were operating on normal schedule, and that someone will circle back to get those picked up. So, if your, um, uh, normal trash night is tonight, please put it out. Uh, if it was last night and you were planning on putting it out this week because of the update on the website or the original calendar, go ahead and put it out, um, and let the city know, uh, to send somebody back to get that. And with that, Mayor, I will yield up.
Mr. Vedder.
I have several things. Um, I've asked the, um, city to prepare a list of park projects for two thousand twenty-five. What we got with the, um, budget was a general list of expenses, and I'm hoping that we can supply the citizens with more specific information. I know we have a number of projects that we're considering, and, and we have some cost estimates on those, so I hope we, we will get that back. Um, and I'm strangely talking about cats. We have a, uh, new ordinance, I think, and a new, new appropriation for, for cats. I think the last time I asked for the count, we have spayed and neutered ninety-nine cats, and, and they have found new homes.
It's over a hundred.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's a good thing, you're on the right trail, and on kind of a sarcastic note, I'm hoping the coyotes don't take care of the rest. Um, we have a, an active committee who is looking into downtown Christmas lights. Uh, I think there was a lot of concern that came from people about the, the general approach of the downtown in terms of lights, and I think in cooperation with Main Street Pickwa, uh, there will be some more activity with that. So if you're interested in that, uh, either contact the administrative officer or Main Street Pickwa. Uh, we have not yet set a date for discussion of the future of the Mo Park Building, but if you're concerned about that building, you should make yourself known, and I would hope that you would have a, um, suggestion for possible uses of that building, uh, because it's set idle now over three years, uh, and so, uh, we will have a meeting on that. I understand that the committee, uh, for looking at the hydraulic canal is scheduled, is about to schedule a meeting for April, so if you're concerned about the hydraulic canal and, uh, the costs and all those kind of issues, this is a good time to, to, to dig in and find out some of the answers on that. Um, I've asked for a list of, and this is kind of a low profile, but a list of properties that we have demolished over the last ten years in the city, and we've used CDB funds and other kinds of funds for that process, and I think it'd just be helpful to citizens to, uh, to see how many properties, some have been burned, some have been condemned, others have been torn down for other reasons, but I think it would be interesting to see a list of what that is, had a person ask me about CDBG money and how that was being used. Um, I understand that we'll be getting probably in April some, uh, end of year reports for two thousand twenty-four, which will include the golf course, uh, Rita, the tax service, uh, the plaza, and some other places, where I think we've made some pretty significant kind of gains in terms of, of having those things come into a financial, uh, play. Um, I'm personally in favor of having a citywide cleanup. Uh, the debate is whether we have it on a specific day or maybe in a month. If you belong to a group or an organization that you think might be willing to participate in some sort of cleanup activity that benefits the city, uh, this is a good time to make yourself known. We, we're in touch with a couple groups already, and I think there are more groups that could be invited to, uh, be involved in that. I'm continuing to be concerned about watching what I call the unemployment rate in the city. I think the last time we talked it was start three forty, it was there, something close to that, uh, and again, we have some, uh, businesses that will be leaving Pickwa, and it's, I'm concerned about we keep a, keep a finger on, on that whole, the whole idea. Just, just a, a point of reference for Roberts Rules of Order, it was a question that came up at the last meeting about whether the commission was able to reconsider motions previously, uh, that talked about it, sometimes decided. The answer was yes. Uh, Roberts Rules does not prohibit, uh, us from reconsidering things, even though there may have been discussion and/or, or a vote in those matters. Uh, I brought along my, my newest purchase. Uh, my newest purchase is a series of, of magnets, and so for those of you who got, uh, letters from the city water department asking for, uh, you to test your water line coming in from the city to see if they were lead or copper or plastic, I'd be happy to share a magnet. It's an easy process. You walk to your basement, you see if the magnet attaches to the water line. If it does, it's probably iron and probably not lead. So I did mine at home, and, and I'd be happy to share some magnets with, uh, with some other people. Um, let's see, and with that, you.
All right. Commissioner Holman.
I'll go back.
Commissioner Simmons.
Okay, well, for a moment, I wasn't going to read this, but then one of my colleagues alluded to having gotten a bunch of calls that said, let's do Runkey. I saw one email that said, let's do Runkey, and that email was sent from Government Watcher at Proton Mail. They wouldn't even identify themselves. If you're out there, Proton, or Government Watcher, we're here. Anyway, so, good evening. Our last meeting was quite lively with the sudden turn of events that now sees all of our citizenry as happy soon-to-be customers of Runkey for all of our trash pickup needs. The following two days, my cell phone rang off the hook. It was a race to see if there would be more scam calls than calls from my rate citizens, but this time the call centers in Banklur did not stand a chance. Everyone calling me was asking me to please, please, please have the city manager removed from his job. I told them that I had tried to do this once already without success. I said if they really want to see him go, they will need to do the following. One, write a letter stating cogently why they want to see the city manager lose his job. Two, make four copies of that letter. Three, mail all five copies of the letter, one to each commissioner at city hall. Make sure one of them is sent via certified mail so they would have a receipt in their hand providing, proving that they mailed the letter. I figured that way, if we go into an executive session and we each have a large pillowcase stuffed with letters, it would give us direction, not just to myself, but also to the other commissioners. It's hard to ignore a big stack of mail. Everything was okay until I got a call from one of the elderly ladies in my ward. For her protection, I'm just going to call her Jane, but she is a real person. She called and said the same thing as the others did. I gave her the same answer that I gave to the others. She sent me a text the following morning, I had it on my phone, and this is what it said. I'm not going to send letters. The more I think about it, I don't trust him. Never know what he could do. It was confusing to me at first, as it may be confusing to you right now. What it boils down to is that I have a constituent in my ward, a tax-paying citizen of this fine city who is afraid to voice her opinion at city hall for fear of personal reprisal from the city manager. Now, I'm not telling everyone they need to write in and have us fire the city manager. What I am telling everyone is that I want you to get involved with your city government. If you think that he's the finest thing to slice bread, write and tell us that, but you need to give us specific reasons as to why. If you want to see him fired, write and tell us that as well, and please do not be afraid of personal reprisal because he knows, as do we, that this would be a fireable offense. With that said, my colleagues and I up here would love to hear from you. The address is two Ten Water Street, Pickwa, Ohio, four five three five six. My name is Paul Simmons, and if you don't know them yet, here they are. Tom Holman, fourth ward, Chris Lee, third ward, Jim Vedder, first ward, and Frank DeBrass, fifth ward. Please write and let us know what you want. Thank you very much.
This is not an interactive tone.
I, I couldn't, I can't even read from here.
It says read, letter submitted just now, I don't know what that means, but, are you done?
Yes, I am.
All right. Uh, my comments, uh, I was disappointed about the change, um, from, uh, city-owned services and then giving services to Runkey. Um, I, I just don't want to play the waiting game to see if they'll come through, but we're about to play the, the waiting game, see that they come through and do exactly what they say that they're going to do. Um, I trusted our, our sanitation workers, but, uh, they were looking out for their best interests, and I understand that, I, I do. So, I mean, it's hard to have a sanitation department when the, the people that are in it are going to different departments, so, um, we'll see, uh, we'll see how services, and we'll take it from there. They are in breach. Can you sit down, please?
Yes, I'll sit down right here.
Thank you. Um, if they are in breach, you know, there are legal reprisals as, uh, um, Commissioner Holman said. So we could take them to court if, if they do something that they're not supposed to do. We'll see what happens at this point. Um, next, uh, you noticed that we didn't do resolution R dash thirty dash twenty-five is because, uh, we withdrew it, am I correct, in saying that? And so we will talk about it, uh, next week, but those who are staying for public comment are more, I don't have it, okay?
She has it.
Oh, she has.
All right, well, I'm not going to read that. Um, what I was going to say is that, uh, we will go over it, uh, next week. Those who are staying for public comment, you're free to talk about that and voice your opinion and let us know what you're thinking. And at this point, I need a message, or a motion to, um, adjourn to, uh, non-attended public comment.
Motion to adjourn the business segment we adjourned.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, and we're going to start right now. Greg Needs, you're up. Kim, you can read that during this, uh, when you get your time, you can read that letter. We'll get it back.
Greg Needs, ten twelve West Green Street. I'd like to know why once the meeting's over, we lose the city manager and the law director.
Just didn't want to stay for, it's not, it's non-agenda public comment, so they'll have to stay. It's your public comment. But if you have a question that you want them to answer, I will write it down, and I will get an answer for you.
No, I don't have a question, but it just seems like they ought to be here for public comment also. I mean, it, if there is questions be asked of them, they should be here to be able to answer them. Um, also, um, I've had a, uh, one of Frank DeBrass's constituents ask me why you voted against your constituents.
You, on which particular?
On the sanitation. It seems like that most of the people in your area evidently wanted to stay with the city sanitation, and you voted against it. You, you let city man, you voted for the city manager, not, not the constituent.
I voted for the cheapest option possible for the residents of the whole city. So I don't know who this individual is, and I can assure you that I voted in, in the manner in which the majority of the constituents that I spoke with regarding this matter wanted me to do. So while I may not have voted in the manner in which this individual wanted me to, I did vote in the manner in which the majority of my constituents did.
Yeah, I just think it's, uh, I agree with Chris and Paul. They're our citizens too, and no matter the cost, a lot of people that I've spoken to have said that they were willing to pay the extra money, and then it turns around and a few words get changed and supposedly another resolution, and then Jim goes ahead and votes the opposite way as he did the prior way, you know? I mean, it just, it doesn't look good for the city or the citizens.
Thanks, Greg. You're welcome.
Just going to respond again, uh, since I became a commissioner a little over a year ago, every time somebody finds out that I'm a commissioner, it's, it's kind of a joke, kind of not, they say, don't raise my rates, don't raise my rates. That is then the consistent refrain every time anything about utilities has come up and unsolicited it has come up. Um, then all of a sudden, within the last couple of weeks here, we've now had this bizarre turn of events where some citizens are claiming that actually the whole city actually really wants higher rates, that that's what everybody's been yearning for this whole time, um, and I just can't help but continue to point out how bizarre that claim is, and that most of the, the absolute vast majority of the Pickwa citizens who want their rates lower find that the claim that they actually really want them higher, they also find that claim to be bizarre.
I wouldn't say that, but I would say that the ones that I talked to wanted control of our sanitation and not given to, uh, Runkey, so that's why, I guess I have to have faith that they'll do a good job, so we'll see.
Now, I had, the people who I've talked to, uh, have said to me, I want my trash picked up, I want it picked up well, I want the quality of service to be good, I want it to be timely, and I'm here with you.
Antonin Moppen for you. Jonathan West.
Uh, good evening. Uh, so, I was wondering the question last week about kind of the motion to reconsider, and my point there was just, uh, we would only go round and round in circles if we had three, two votes, and then every meeting, right, the same two people who voted on the losing side continue to say, make a motion, make a second, make everybody vote again, right? So that's why, you know, Congress has that rule, and that's why typically you'll see the leader kind of switch their vote at the last minute and vote no, that way they can bring it back up for a vote. But anyway, um, I do agree with Mr. Nees' comments about the public comment. You guys made the rules, changed the rules what they are today, you can change them back. I think it's silly that city staff all gets to leave. It's not recorded, and my understanding, you could change it back if you wanted. Um, I'll come back for the second reading for the, um, sanitation changes, but I do think we kind of, kind of got duped a little bit. We were given, uh, a side-by-side comparison of the rates, Runkey rates and the city rates, but we seem to have left out the fact that there was this utility business office subsidy that was needed. And so the Runkey rate, if I do the quick math, appears like it's like ten percent higher than what we set the rates because we're going to have to continue to fund the billing office. So I would encourage you guys to not, I don't know if you should or not, but really think about how this is going to play out. If we run down that two million dollars in subsidizing the office, at some point, we're going to need a very large rate increase, right? And that, you know, that's ten years down the road, and that, where we heard on year five, it's like over quarter of a million dollars, we're going to be at three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand dollars that the nine thousand households are going to have to pay. Um, and then I also thought that the senior citizen rate was discussed in some of the early work sessions, maybe the ones back at the end of last calendar year.
Hold it in because we asked them to, to, uh, consider keeping, uh, the services and the rates and all that stuff.
Okay, I'll go back and, and look at that, but I thought that was discussed, but, okay, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Larry Hamilton.
I'm Larry Hamilton, uh...
I'm Larry Hamilton, uh, 1104 Maplewood Drive. And I just, uh, wanted to thank, uh, the city manager for referring, uh, my name and, uh, to the personnel at, uh, the Miami Valley, uh, newspaper in connection with, uh, Black History Month events. And I, I then decided that I would make an effort to go ahead and share those, uh, activities with you as well. So, uh, this Thursday, I believe that, uh, we're having a drum circle at the Randolph and McCullough Freedom Struggle Complex sponsored by the North Star Coffee Station. And, uh, if you are interested in participating, you don't even need to have a, uh, drum of your own. You can come and utilize the drums that are provided at the, uh, complex. Saturday, uh, we think we're gonna be having a Idea Troy, uh, book reading, uh, for, uh, children primarily. And, uh, also Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, we're having Tyrone Collier, uh, who is, uh, gonna be, uh, discussing money matters and financial wealth concerns. Saturday evening, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, we're gonna be having, uh, entertainment by Pequah's Mr. Blues Man. That's what I call, uh, Ron Redmond. And if you've never heard, uh, someone, uh, played a guitar and sang the blues, uh, you need to get out Saturday evening to hear Ron Redmond. He's very good. We would also like to, uh, encourage parents to, uh, bring their children to see the Model G Prod train-up, uh, exhibit that can be, uh, tracked through three rooms of the complex. I don't think there's anything like this, uh, uh, in Miami County, frankly. And, uh, so, we would encourage, uh, you know, uh, parents to take advantage and give the kids, uh, an opportunity to see something so unique as a, uh, Model G train coursing through the, uh, three rooms of the complex. And, uh, I also wanted to just raise, uh, one question. I, I saw a military-style police vehicle driving through the community, uh, this, uh, this week and I was curious as to whether or not that was procured.
Let's go to Enra. We had it before I was off the police department.
I hadn't, I hadn't seen it before. Thank you.
Thank you. Some new additions?
Am I up there yet?
Yeah, but you've been, I'm gonna let you go later and let other people talk.
I thought the reason for filling out the forms was to have it in order as you're about to.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Nina Park. No, you're, you're being safe. No problem. Thank you.
Hi, I wanted to ask about the law directors. Um, my understanding that Frank left and that we got a new law director to replace Frank, but now I'm being told, and I've requested the records, that Frank is still on. Do you guys decide who the law director? You don't vote on it?
We don't even vote. Well, we vote on if there's a contract. But if they make him an employee, city manager decides that.
Okay, so the way I'm understanding, and I wanna watch what I say, but sometimes I'm not politically correct. But I understand that she hasn't worked in government, so she doesn't have a clue what's going on. So Frank is staying on, helping her. Is that correct?
That is absolutely incorrect.
Okay, requested.
Extremely knowledgeable about government things.
So, we don't have Frank Patrizio at all helping?
No, he is not helping at all.
You sure about that?
Yeah, you, you better really watch.
My understanding is that he is.
Yeah, watch.
Yeah.
Prosecutions and one thing.
So, we've got two law directors right now and we have an assistant.
Isn't the transition assisting case loads?
Ooh, you better talk to him.
We've never had a, needed a transition before. I've asked, I will, I will expect those records if this is a normal procedure. You should be able to prove that. You should have receipts. But why do we have two law directors, an assistant? I just watched her walk out. God bless her, she's pregnant. So, she's gonna be off for months, so we're gonna still have Frank around for months. Was this the plan?
That's my knowledge. Mayor, can you please write down, I would like a full report of what that is?
Was it planned? Yeah, was it planned? I feel like...
No plan that I know of.
I know, but you guys didn't hire the person. So, we hired a person that has no government knowledge and now we have two lawyers, an assistant, and she's pregnant, she'll be off for months. So, it seems like the citizens got set up.
I wouldn't say that she has no government knowledge.
Oh, you know what I mean.
But there's, she, she doesn't have as much experience in, in the process.
Personally, I think that you would love her if you talked to her.
Oh, I, it's not that. It's not that. Do the citizens love paying for two? Do they?
I didn't know that.
Do the citizens need to know this? Yes, they do.
I think, I think whatever fee was, is being paid is within the budget that was set up.
What I would, what I would suspect, and I'll be very disappointed if I find out differently, what I suspect is that Mr. Patrizio was under a contract and that that contract period probably needed to be exhausted. I don't know how long that contract period is. If there was at some point a new contract set up, then I would be curious to know that.
It just seems like one cluster F after another. Excuse me, but it does. I, I, I don't know. This, I didn't say the word.
No, you didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to put forward that I'm, uh, quite embarrassed and extremely upset that this is the manner in which I'm finding out that he is still on the payroll.
We don't know that.
Well, I don't know that. I would, I would like to hear a full accounting of whether or not that is true.
I believe that he is.
The question is, can we get some clarification?
Yeah, we'll get some clarification.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Danielle Albright.
Good evening. I actually live in Washington Township, but it is just on the side of the property that you guys.
Annexed.
Annexed, yes, and that you wanna change to the CV instead of the Conservation CN. I listened and I understand the reason for your questions to the gentleman, but I did wanna bring it to your attention and I highly urge you guys to get some kind of survey done on that land because as of right now, you have a pair of nesting bald eagles there, which there is a protection act that you can't build anything within a certain distance of the nest. We also have hen-slo sparrows and northern harriers. They also have nests in that area and they're both endangered species.
How far from you are they?
Uh, I am...
Distance wise, the, what you said?
From the property, it was told to me that I was 750 feet from the...
The bald eagles?
Um, well, from the property. The bald eagles, I live across the street from Johnston's Farm. So, we've actually seen them behind us as well as at Johnston's Farm and as well as that lake across from Johnston's Farm. I'm sorry, I can't remember what it's called. Yes. Um, the,
We've seen the run.
The run, yeah. Um, I seen one of the parents actually showing one of the nesting new ones that just came out, I guess, uh, how to hunt. They were hunting in that pond over there, so it was...
What was the other birds you said that had?
Uh, hen-slo sparrows and northern harrier. Both of those are endangered and we know we've got those as well. And on the backside of the property, actually that butts up to the property that you guys are talking about, we actually have 10 beehives as well that are kept there. Um, there's a bee person that has those hives. You can clearly see them from anywhere because there's no vegetation right now, it's winter. But, um, that's why I ask that you guys at least do a survey if you're going to keep it at CV, just to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Sure.
Because we do have so much conservation out in that area. We don't wanna mess that up. Johnston's Farm and we've also got, uh, an actual walkway right next to Johnston's Farm. That's historic, so we wanna keep. So, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Atkins.
Thank you. Hey. Um, what?
You're at.
Oh, I, I'm getting it, I'm getting it.
Oh, alright, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Uh, my name's Tiffany Atkins. I live at 1013 South Street. Um, I know that it was taken off the ballot or whatever, we're not allowed to talk about it, but I just wanna...
No, you can talk about it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah?
Um, yeah, so I'm just bringing to you today that, um, I urge you to not only zone the two parcels in question as conservation, but to also provide better alternatives for the substation placement. Uh, we as a city are well aware that AES is already in Pequah. We welcome that help supply power to our citizens and businesses. As told in the last meeting, not a single substation is near a residential area, so why are we choosing to do that now?
There's that 25A, there's one by the old bike.
The power plant, right behind the old power plant?
Yeah, that one's, uh, 140 feet from a residence.
Okay. How rich is 10 feet from the one that you would plan to do out on Hardin?
The border would be, they presumably would not be putting the equipment right at an inch of border.
Okay. Well, anyways, um, lost my spot, y'all. Uh, not only would you be choosing to, for it to be by residential, but you would be choosing it to be right next to the water plant, which is what provides us our drinking water. And, um, it would be in close proximity to Swift Run. And then, um, I don't know if any of you guys would wanna live next to a substation. Would you? No?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay. Um, I know that Pequah stands to make probably a significant amount of money off of selling the parcels. Am I correct? Is that correct? Do you guys sell the parcels to?
The 25A is the next, or should I?
So, it's like roughly like $125,000?
Standard.
Okay, I'm just asking. Um, I just, I wondered to know if maybe we had thought about putting it in other places, um, like the old Pequah Krogers, the old Kmart. That's like an eyesore in Pequah. So, I don't see why we couldn't maybe kind of kill two birds with one stone.
So, putting it where it's, where they're suggesting is to provide redundancy in power options for that end of town. We do have substations in other areas in the town. Um, I'd be glad to show you a map of where the substations are located at, but we don't have any out in that area.
Okay.
And the other issue is that several of those buildings you mentioned are in the township, not in the city, right?
Okay.
Yeah, the Krogers isn't in Pequah, the old Krogers isn't.
What, what, what's done with the, what happens at the old power plant? What, what's?
We received a grant, it's called Brownfield Grant, and I think the intention of the grant is to, uh, investigate and then remove that specimen from that plant. That was the first step in trying to see what, what the value of the plant would be for other purposes.
Okay. And then, what, are there any talks about like what could possibly happen to the Nido Dinko area? Is that just gonna sit desolate or?
We don't know yet. We have talks about that.
What about like the industrial park that's out on 25A?
There's actually a substation out in mind in Nido Dinko.
Okay. What about the industrial park that's, I'm sure is already zoned as industrial? You know, out there on 25A?
Yeah, if you've, you've already got a substation out that way, is what I just said.
I mean, you can't put more than one on the, on an area?
It's bound for redundancy, so you already have one.
Okay.
Yeah, the redundancy is that there's a ring that goes around Pequah, so if somebody hits a telephone or hits a power pole in one area, the ring still can complete the other direction.
Okay.
So, if we put them both next to each other, it doesn't provide that redundancy.
Okay. I'm just saying, I think that maybe you should think about, I mean, I understand if you wanna put it out in that area, whatever, but I mean, there's all kinds of land out in that area that's not right next to people's houses. I mean, I know that I live up on top of the hill and it, whatever, it doesn't maybe majorly affect me, but my kids go to a house that's on that road. My kids play on that road, their kids play on that road. I mean, they didn't move out to the country and pay a little bit more to have a substation put right next to their house. And, and, I mean, people move out to the country for peace and quiet and it's already hard enough when you have the water plant out there. I mean, there was trees that were supposed to be planted, but only four of them made it and the other ones died and then nothing's been done about that since. I mean, I'm just asking you to maybe think about other possibilities to put the substation at. And these people have young kids. They're trying to make lives for their kids and, and, you know, provide this beautiful childhood for them. And I just, I feel like there's so many other options that could be done to put this substation rather than in somebody's side yard. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Nick Brown.
Nick Brown, 9937 Harden Alternate. Uh, my wife and kids and I lived in town for 11 years and, uh, last year we decided to move to Harden Alternate for more of a country living experience. Right now, it's quiet and dark for the most part and it's our little slice of heaven. We are very concerned that if this plot of land is zoned in any way to allow industrial development, our peace, quiet, and darkness would be stripped away. The overall noise and light from the water treatment plant already posed an issue for us in addition to the excessive lighting that would only become worse with the addition of a substation. It was promised to the surrounding residents when proposing the water treatment plant that there would be tree buffers and other actions taken to mitigate the noise and light and those promises were not upheld. All the trees were supposed to be buffering, thus surrounding residents of the noise and light from the water treatment plant have all died except for four of them. Why would we as residents right next door be okay with this parcel of land being zoned in any way that would allow future industrial development when it has been proven that promises are not upheld? The mound that was put behind the water treatment plant to, that buffers the light and noise going into comes to circle is effective now, but what if the develop, what if a development goes in on this parcel of land and that mound is leveled? It seems that when we as citizens give an inch, the city will take a mile, which leads me to my next concern, which is the health and safety of our family and the surrounding families in the area. Light pollution is linked to throwing off your circadian rhythm, which causes obesity, diabetes, immune deficiencies, and cardiac arrhythmias. Constant low-frequency noise is linked to causing cardiovascular disease and psychological disorders, among others. Electromagnetic frequencies, or EMFs, are a byproduct of overhead high-powered lines causing ionization of our air. These ions get attached to aerosol particles and supercharges the air pollution, which can travel up to four and a half miles away. EMF exposure is many studies linking, linking it to cancer, leukemia, especially high in children, Alzheimer's dementia, immune system deficiencies, and more. Our children are homeschooled, so they are home majority of the time and it's very concerning and upset, upsetting that our children would be exposed to so many negative effects and be at risk for a terminal illness in the name of industrial progress. I do have additional information on EMFs, light, noise, pollution, all that stuff, if you guys want a copy of it.
Yep.
Um, we're also concerned about our property value. Uh, as we purchased this home not even a year ago, it would be detrimental to us if our property value was to plummet due to a substation being built not even 50 feet from our home. Uh, studies show that it could drop your property value anywhere from 10 to 30% with the substation in the area. There are so many homes surrounding this parcel of land and it would be negatively impacting every single one of them. So, what I'm asking is that this parcel of land to be zoned, be zoned conservation where no industrial developments can be made. There are trees... There are trees, wildflowers, and plenty of animals that reside on this land, which makes it the perfect spot for it to be zoned conservation. Uh, let the residents of this area have our peace, quiet, and our well-being. Thank you.
Do you have a study or maybe?
Yes, sir, no.
I'll take a copy.
Thank you.
Um, man, just for a little extra information on the history for that area. So the reason why that area is coming up for zoning now is because when the zoning uh regulations were updated about three years ago under the new code Pickwa, the uh, the, the people in the city department that are supposed to be updating the maps forgot to do that area. Uh, and so it was just never updated when the maps were updated, or when the definitions were updated. Back, if you go back four years ago to the old zoning designation, that area was actually zoned something that looks like heavy industry. Um, and so.
The OS.
Open space.
Kyle stated that. Yes, yes, and he stated it this time too, it was open space along with what the, the land that the water plant was uh zoned at.
Thank you. And I would the, I hope the OS was because it was unzoned after the.
No, it hasn't been OS.
My apologies.
The old water plant in two thousand and eighteen was H1 and changed to.
Excuse me, Nick.
Sorry.
It's public comment, I'm going to do this right, thank you.
Okay. You can ask me later.
We will. Let people talk. Brittany Brown, your turn.
Hello, I'm Brittany Brown at nine nine three seven Harden Alternate also. So I have a couple of questions. Um, last week, we talked in front of the planning board. Um, we did not get any notification from the city of Pickwa. Okay, so a couple of questions with that. Um, we found out by SAM trespassing for a week and a half on our property. Um, when we asked questions on why they were there, they gave us no information, which led to us calling the city of Pickwa. Um, Kyle stated to me last week, it's because my address is wrong, and that is not on fault of the city, is what he told me. I get a city utility bill every single month.
So it can't be wrong.
Correct. Um, he read it to me as North Harden, which I agree. It's Harden Alternate, he had in record North Hall, North Harden. Um, I've had multiple things sent to me North Harden, and I still receive it. Like I said, I still get my utility bill every single month, so we're not missing that one, my bills always come into me, so, um.
We could have contacted you.
Correct, and I was told that he cannot help, nor can the city, that I did not come pick my letter up. I don't know how I was supposed to pick up a letter that I didn't know was coming to me. Um, I also want to know, I believe it was Kyle that stated they only tell people within two hundred feet from the property that's being discussed. That's the legal, like that's the legal matter that you have to tell. Um, so my question is, is there a way that we can do more than just what's asked of us legally? So I know Danielle that spoke earlier, she's.
Excuse me?
She's seven hundred and fifty feet away, but her house is still budding up to the property. So I'm not understanding why we're only doing what's legally obligated of us instead of making sure we're doing more than that to make sure the citizens know what's happening.
Sure.
Um, I thought there was something else I wanted to say, give me just a second. Oh, um, is there a reason why it was not discussed on the conservation side tonight and we're instantly tabling it to put it back to CV or IL?
Well, it was a, we, we decided that we wanted to go with uh CV talk as.
Okay.
As a conservation, it's a recommendation.
Okay.
From the uh planning commission, not a, not a, not an order.
Correct, which is understood, so.
But, you know, given that we know some more stuff, I know there are bald eagles out there, or.
Other dangerous species.
Other, yeah, slow sparrow.
They're actually in the letter.
About that.
The letter that you guys got on top has all of that in there. We wrote a letter and sent it in to Chad Henry. We were told not to send it to commissioners, we were told to send it to Chad Henry, which is the.
Who told you that?
Um, in the meeting last week. Yeah, you, Mr. Vetter would know, he was here. We were told to send it to uh the city planner and the commission community or something.
But I've got it now.
Okay, yeah, yeah, um, I think that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Todd. It's going on. Kim Heisler.
Kim Heisler, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. I have a, a couple of things here. Uh, you just, she had just mentioned um speaking up at the commission meeting, and I think you said, why didn't you talk to the commissioners? Did you say that?
Asked her why she didn't send it to us.
Oh, okay, well, there might have been a, um, a little bit of confusion because I thought we were, you were talking about sending it to the planning commissioners. But anyways, they had mentioned that those commissioners not. But it went to planning, because planning had everything to do with it. Anyways, okay, so on the AES thing also. Uh, please, next time when it comes up, please present the color original um artist rendition of what that was supposed to look like, because I think that'll also bring new light as to um what's going to happen. Okay, so the other thing, uh, and this is compliments of Pickwa Constitutional Republic Accountability Project, Citizens Uniting for Truth and Transparency. And right off the bat, it's called, and if you have questions, please email pickua crap at gmail dot com. That's P-I-Q-U-A-C-R-A-P at gmail dot com. So I'd like to take um my best um reading skills at this.
You have five minutes and fifteen seconds.
Yep, I'm going to do the best I can. This is uh what I would like to have submitted uh to the agenda meeting minutes earlier, but um, I have it in my hand here, and I would still like for you guys to present it to be in the minutes for next meeting as well. This is to the attention of every one of you, and you guys all have a copy in your email right now waiting. Dear Commissioners, Vetter, Simmons, Lee, Holman, and DeBross. I'm writing to you as a resident of Pickwa regardless, regarding concerns I have with the current city manager, Mr. Paul Oberdorfer. Since you represent residents of your district, please consider that this letter acts as a formal complaint. Mr. Oberdorfer is not fit to lead the city of Pickwa with regards to leadership, competencies, competencies, operational oversight, or fiscal responsibility. Mr. Oberdorfer has displayed an alarming lack of transparency, has consistently behaved with inappropriate attitude of disdain towards residents of Pickwa, whom he has a constitutional obligation to. And he appears to be leveraging inappropriate power over the commissioners to control city proceedings through unconstitutional means and allowing for obvious conflicts of interest to go left unchecked. Mr. Oberdorfer, Oberdorfer has been in his post as city manager since January eleventh, ninth, uh, twenty twenty-one. On January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, it came to light that Mr. Oberdorfer did not have a signed oath of office on file, and therefore was not officially sworn in under his oath for over four years. This is a direct violation of the city of Pickwa ordinances where it states on page forty-two, section one thirty. Every officer of the city shall, before entering upon duties of his office, take and subscribe to the following oath or affirmation to be filed and be kept in the office of the city clerk. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will obey the constitution and the laws of the United States of the State of Ohio, and that will respect and observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city of Pickwa, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city manager. When Mr. Oberdorfer was exposed not having signed the oath of office, his response was sent, his response was to send a deeply inappropriate reprimand to the citizen of Pickwa who went to the city office requesting copies of all the oaths of office on file, and then waited until they could be provided. It turned out, aside, aside from the five commissioners, there weren't legally, there weren't legally required signed oaths of office on file for all the city officials who are required to take and sign the oath. The email communication from, from the city manager stated, you may request letters in person or via email. Our staff will not be interrupted from daily duties to fulfill any future on-demand information requests made in person. To be clear, the city of Pickwa staff are paid by and work for the people. They don't work for Paul Oberdorfer. Mr. Oberdorfer is a Pickwa servant, public servant. All political power is inherent in the people, and no public servant may use his perceived power for purpose or evasion, speaking truth to power is a fundamental right that the founders wrote into our beloved Constitution Republic. The oath of office offers a safeguard to ensure that every public official discharges their doodles, duties of the office in which they are entrusted with faithfully, faithfully. The city manager in a position required, is in a position requiring public trust. City, Pickwa city officials vow to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Bill of Rights, and the Constitution. It's deeply disturbing that Mr. Oberdorfer has held public office in other states prior to being hired in Pickwa, yet he didn't initiate his oath of office on the day he took office, or even up to ten days prior to taking office, as the Pickwa Code of Ordnances states it allows, is allowed. How is it possible to trust a public official who does not respect the Constitution enough to ensure he initiates the legally binding oath of office as priority? Public trust is not possible in a constitutional republic when the oath of the Constitution and laws of the United States of Ohio are not affirmed or adhered to. Due to negligence and/or ignorance, which is no defense under the law, Mr. Oberdorfer is in serious violation of the city of Pickwa's ordinances, which is a misdemeanor. But the situation is far worse, considering the charter and ordinances Mr. Oberdorfer is bound by. The city of Pickwa's charter states, ten dot nine nine, general penalty. Whenever in this municipal code or any ordinance of the municipality.
Thank you, Kim. You have seven minutes left.
If anybody would like to go look.
Thank you, Kim.
Yep.
I had your email.
Pickua craft at gmail dot com.
Thank you.
You guys want a copy?
Kim, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Nicholas Mart.
Nicholas Mart, fourteen thirty-three, coming to know new. Sorry, my back's hurting a little bit tonight. Um, in uh twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, capital, capital improvement plan for the city of Pickwa. These are some issues that uh Mr. DeBross was um probably seated up by, you know, the commission regarding. I know this is an important issue that brought him on board. I think I've talked with Mr. Holman about it as well. Um, the water, the waters that uh up by, you know, Swift Run, France Pond, Echo Lake, um, all of it's related to the uh Swift Run Dam, the hydraulic safety, uh, Swift Run Dam Safety Project. Uh, now, if you go on pickuadamstudytwentytwentytwo dot com, I think that's no longer a website, it's been removed or something, but I have uh most, everything that's on that website captured to my phone, so luckily I can use it for reference. Um, Swift Run Dam Safety Project is allotted to go in phases according to this capital improvement plan. Phase one, phase one is designed and construct to improve the safety and hydraulic capacity of the Swift Run and a pond and spillway and earthworks dependent upon OD and R. So the cost for that is going to be four million dollars, that's phase one. Echo Lake Dam Safety Project, phase two. Uh, safety hydraulic related to infrastructure improvement associated with Echo Lake's watershed, hydraulic canal and spillway, number one, estimated cost is four million. Phase three, dam safety project to hydraulically pass P, PMF or storm flow event through France Pond through city or onto Echo Lake watershed. Estimated cost, two million. So that's ten million in taxpayer dollars, that's probably on the low end, because you've got to pay workers, you've got to pay for um, you know, bulldozers or whatever have you to accomplish this, this process. Um, it looks lengthy, it seems lengthy, um, I don't know um what the outcome of all this is going to be, but it surely is going against what, you know, we envisioned for the city and, and what you have described to me in the past, that you envisioned for the city as far as preserving the lakes and waterways.
So, are you ready for me to respond?
I guess.
Alright. So um, it's my understanding that those numbers are put in the uh future years budget plan as simply markers.
Yeah.
Uh, right, so the city is actually setting aside uh that money for when we get to the point, hopefully, uh, to make whatever improvements are necessary to keep us in compliance. Uh, just because those monies are set aside in the budget doesn't mean that we're going to spend that. Uh, and we can't spend them until we know what the plan is. And we don't know what the plan is until we get additional guidance from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. So I, I think you're um, one, um, identifying that it was there, um, was, was, was very good. But I think you're taking a couple of steps that quite frankly, we're not ready to take yet. So um, I would file this under the city actually doing its due diligence by setting aside money. Uh, because regardless of whether the outcome is.
Sorry.
With those uh waterways, it is going to cost us money. So beginning the process now of starting to budget for those costs, so that we can hopefully get to the outcome that I know you and I both want.
Yeah.
Um, it, it is good planning, but you're absolutely right, it's going to cost a whole heck of a lot more than that.
Yeah, I'm not looking forward to that. I, I'm along the same lines as where you were in the very beginning, I mean, save these waterways and lakes.
There's still a path to do that. Uh, this is just doing um the necessary work to make sure we're setting money aside. Because even when we save them, we're going to have to reinvest into uh what they refer to as the earth and dams and the spillway. That is out by Swift Run. So regardless of, of what happens, we're going to have to reinvest in that infrastructure.
Okay. Um, uh, you guys mentioned Moke Park, the uh building up at Moke Park. Uh, I was a boy scout when I was a kid, so maybe a scout troop or something could be, uh, maybe that can be utilized for scouts or, you know, something small, a meeting place.
See, having a meeting on Moke Park, I hope is that you will come with ideas. Hopefully, there are very few ideas.
Well, that's, that's one.
And again, um, in the worst case scenario, in my opinion, is they'll be torn down.
Hmm, hopefully not.
Uh, that decision hasn't been made, but, but for that building, it's tied with three years.
Hmm.
Uh, and two of the projects that uh were in place to, to move that building.
Yes.
Both have failed. Uh, now we're in a position where we have a building that, that is not used well. We're still paying up to that building. Uh, and so when we have Moke Park meeting, my hope is you come with concrete plans to, to share what, what your vision is to use that building. And I'm a chairman of that building, uh, appears in my neighborhood area. And uh, for Ohio, we were the only group that was using it uh on, on, on a regular basis.
Okay.
So it, it has, and we have concerns for it. And again, smart management would say that let's at least have a identified plan that helps us recruit, recoup the cost of maintaining that building.
Okay.
We put some money in that.
I want to get on to another topic here.
Well, you get like ten seconds.
Ten seconds, now come on.
Yes.
Some other people had a little more like.
Seven minutes, everybody.
Okay. Okay.
Everybody said seven.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, did you want to talk?
No, I'll be late now. I'm gonna go.
I hear you. You are, just hold on a second. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have one question for you. Heisler mentioned something about, and I had no idea about any of this, if someone is doing business for the city of PIKWA as an officer of the city and has not signed their oath of office, you mentioned that's a misdemeanor. Is that, do you know if that's a charge of law?
That would be civil, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that would be something the law director would have to refer to the courts.
Okay, I was just curious.
All right, Jeff Grimes.
Jeff Grimes, 1512, Margene Drive. Mr. Simmons, thank you for speaking up to the citizens. There's a lot of us that feel the same way. To my commissioners, they work for us. This is a slap in the face that these people don't stay and listen to the public comments. How can you guys not be upset with the people that are running this town don't stay and listen to the bosses? Can you imagine if your bosses called a meeting where you worked at and you just got up and left when they were getting ready to speak? You guys should be outraged that these people leave and do not listen to us. That is unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable. And so we're talking about the sanitation department again. And if I do believe so, Ronkey was allowed to increase their prices 5% a year. And the reason that the citizens came forward and wanted us to keep the sanitation department is because we care about the employees from the city of PIKWA. And it doesn't sound like this current administration cares about the city or its employees. So we're talking about money, that it's costing the city money. So when's the next thing? What is the budget for the police department in PIKWA? I know we spend a lot of money. We just spent a lot of money on cars. We just spent a lot of money on a side-by-side. So when will his next proposal be that we get away with the city of PIKWA and we contract through Sheriff's Department? So then, didn't we give a lot of grant money to Mo Park? Wasn't there a grant money issued to?
There was a $50,000 grant by the PIKWA Community Foundation given to, what was it, the power project to do improvements. There was also a grant to fix the bathrooms, is that correct?
Well, yeah, to not create, and that was a $30,000 grant. And that money was given back because of asbestos concerns.
So what happened to the $50,000?
Well, the $50,000, I don't get what was given. It was promised but not given.
They didn't accept it at this time because they haven't done anything after.
And the second thing was the $30,000 grant was given back because of discovery of asbestos. That's been-
So that's an absolute mess with the asbestos.
Yeah, it's gonna cost a ton of, a big time.
And it's such a great spot. The kids love doing-
I've had three kids of mine graduate, have graduation parties out there. I love that spot.
Just the amount of people that had fun when we had snow was, the kids just had a blast.
But we're not talking about the yard, we're talking about the building.
Right. So then, wouldn't there be an option just to tear it down and put some type of an activity center for it?
One of the discussions is, what is the use of that building? And if we have good concrete ideas for use of it, they're gonna come out and that building could be redesigned, made safe. But the other issue is that up to this point, there are very few ideas that have come up. And then the problem, we have this community-wide meeting, will be come prepared to share concrete positive ideas for the use of the building, because right now, it's, it deteriorates when it's not used.
It's not being used, sure.
When we have the park assistant director having a spot there, I think that's vandalism, then we have vandalism issues, and all kinds of things going on there.
Yeah.
And so we gotta have people who will come and say, look, I have this project, here's how it's gonna work, here's how we're gonna fund it. So we got some serious issues to discuss.
Personally, I would knock it down, give it a little toxic asbestos. I think I'd like to put a structure there similar down to Hollow Park. Have you been down there, the newer pavilion down there? I think something like that there would be perfect for that location.
I really wish you guys, before I run out of time, I really wish you guys would consider that the public comments are part of the city meeting, because this is, this is absolutely unacceptable that they leave. That means they don't care about what we say. And that is, that is terrible that we're paying these people money and they will not stay or listen to what we have to say. That's unacceptable to me. Another thing that I just noticed before we came into town or to the meeting is there was a leak at Forest and Park Avenue at the-
I love you.
So what about these grass mats that they put down to keep that from eroding? And if you've ever been to Lockington Dam, the dam is, the whole side of the dam is nothing but rocks to keep it from eroding. This part of PIKWA is unique. Is there another town that you can think of that has the old canal system and such an awesome spot for our citizens to use except for, except for this area? This makes our town unique, and we have to save this. We'll blow money on anything else. Ooh, here goes a, here goes $500,000, here goes a million. This makes PIKWA unique, and it needs to be saved. Another thing that the city manager said at the last meeting is there was no employees that were terminated when Hampton Golf took over the golf course. And I think Chip Fox worked for the city.
Didn't he retire?
I think he, I think he retired because they were gonna get rid of his position. And I do believe that there was another person that was out there, but I'm not 100% sure. Then it was brought to my attention that the city golf course received a $150,000 grant to repair the creek along hole 16. And now they have gone out and cut all the trees down because it affected the way the golf people could hit the ball.
Your time is up, Jeff. I'll ask about that.
Please do the meetings that are televised for public comment and make them stay and listen to us.
We're gonna have a report back in April about the golf course. And so my sense is that's a good opportunity to take a look at what's going on, what we, money we've received, money we've spent, employees. My understanding is that no employees who wanted to continue employment were discharged. And so everyone was picked up by Hampton Golf that night. If that's not accurate, I'll double-check, but I don't answer.
That concludes all the questions or all the cards I have for public comment. I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Right? Move in a second, we're adjourned.